Did you finish the rest now?
No, I'm still working on it.
What's name?
Not what?
Best out agents.
What is today? Have a big day this week, thank you. Good day.
And you're doing a good job, that's all.
But nobody else may show up, but we're here.
Hey. I'm glad you made it.
How you doing, Bill? Oh, it was nice. It does. I didn't know, did not.
Not here.
You have, um, Keegan's looking for him.
I've been there. I'm good. The one that I made about. That'd really be bad.
How'd your meeting go?
It went on.
I did, man. It was three thirty.
All right. I'm calling this special session of the Van Zandt County Commissioners Court to order Wednesday, June 12th at three oh six. Yeah? And I do have a form of commissioners are present. And then, uh, general announcements. Do we have any general announcements? All right, I do, uh, for those of you unaware, the, uh, funeral services for Commissioner Melton have been scheduled for, uh, visitation will be Monday, ninth and seventeenth of June, uh, from six to eight P M. At Evans Funeral Home. And the, uh, memorial service will be held on Tuesday, June eighteenth at two P M. At Lakeside Baptist Church. With the, uh, uh, grave side services occurring after that back at Evans. Where he will have a military, uh, honor guard, uh, service in that regard. Uh, we have obtained from the governor, uh, an order to lower the flags countywide to half staff on Monday, the seventeenth and Tuesday, the eighteenth in honor of Commissioner Melton. And we have another, uh, Commissioner Court meeting next Tuesday at, uh, nine A M. In which we will have a special presentation in regards to Commissioner Melton. So, I just want to let everybody know that. So, uh, I don't know, Mr. Ray, any public comments? Got, did you fill that? Where is our, uh? Can I clarify?
They're just.
Thank you. And where are the microphones? More proceedings.
Judge, we were not recording when you started. We are now, but we were not.
We are now recording?
We are now, but we were on.
All right, so you repeat. Start the meeting over. I call this meeting to order. Special session on Wednesday, June the twelfth at three P M. Actually, it's three oh, pretend. And, uh, we do have a forum. Uh, the general announcements is we have, Commissioner Melton's funeral services have been, uh, established and they're going to be his visitation will be Monday, June seventeenth from six to eight P M. At Evans Funeral Home. The, uh, memorial service will be Tuesday, June nineteenth at two P M. At Lakeside Baptist Church. And following that will be his, uh, burial at Evans with military honors. So, you know, we do have any other public comments? Not, we'll go to our, uh, public comments. We have comments from Ann Nelson on item number seven. Item number seven, which is, uh, discuss, consider maintaining semi annual training for all election workers.
Maybe.
Maybe, I'm sorry. Yeah, all right, Ann, you're up.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Ann Nelson, I'm a precinct chair, vice chair for the Van Zandt County Democratic Party. I live in San Antonio, speaking in regards to agenda item seven regarding mandating semi annual training for all election workers. And from a survey conducted during our democratic party training, we learned that those who attended our training preferred either training once a year or only before elections. However, if the county believes more election training is needed, we would support and encourage our election workers to attend more voluntary training. Mandating semi annual training is a proposed solution, but we do not have an understanding of the problem that prompted the solution. We have concerns about how mandated training would be implemented and how it would impact the recruitment and retention of election workers. So we tend to propose government mandates targeting individuals, especially those involved in the election process. Uh, we feel we should know why mandated training is needed and how to measure its effectiveness. So we would like to propose a meeting between the county clerk's office, a representative from the commissioners board, and representatives from both political parties so that we all hear the same information. We all understand the problem, discuss, present alternatives, evaluate costs, consider the impact on the recruitment and retention of qualified election workers, and then consider solutions. So the Van Zandt County Democratic Party is respectfully requesting that agenda ID setting be taken.
Thank you very much. I believe that's all the public comments. Uh, next item is, uh, number four, consent agenda, consent agenda. Uh, all items are considered routine by commission, will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items. Unless the county judge or commissioner requests an item be removed and the content agenda be considered separately. Is there any items to be discussed? I have an amendment to the meeting minutes from, uh, five twenty-one. Um.
Any waivers, sir?
Yes.
For the adjusted copy.
That is correct. So you have an adjusted copy, then we don't need it. All right. Uh, and then, um, item number C, consider, or B, uh, consider approval of county bills for paying as submitted. Uh, I received an updated binder ten minutes ago, fifteen minutes ago, that has the county bills in it. It wasn't in the original one. I had not had an opportunity to review the bills for Pam.
Which bill?
Well, this is kind of an odd deal, but, uh, the, the report date is six, uh, four, at eleven forty-one. So, the only, the only bills I have, there was a, a report with two bills on it. So I'm, I'm going to suggest.
Two, two's all I know. I don't know which one you're looking at.
Yeah, is that what, is all there is?
That's all I know.
Okay, then, then it's fine. That's all, I think. This here is a payroll. It's not the, uh, it's not bills, actually. So I'm safe. All right, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as in the current binder?
So move, Pearson.
All right, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All votes like sign, motion passed. Item number five, presentation by tax benefit consultant Jonathan Collinger on health insurance benefits plan renewal and discuss and approve county judge to sign renewal contract.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me. My book is on task, as always. Pretty fun to have to talk to you, call you up seriously. And you're all really well.
Thank you.
Uh, so Van Zandt County overall compared to other counties in the Northeast, performing very well. All the better. The main statistic you can use in determining what your rates will be, your renewal rates, is the loss ratio. And so the loss ratio, if it's at a hundred percent, what that means is every dollar paid in in premiums, we pay out in claims. So our target is around ninety-four percent. So right now, y'all are just over a hundred percent. So we paid out roughly about, uh, fifteen thousand dollars to the claims that you paid in. So you're operating within a reasonable margin. So that's why you're seeing the six percent increase this year on plans. I was encouraged to look at other plans to see if maybe moving from my grandfather candy along their public plan would be beneficial. For the county, at this point, I don't think they could. Uh, I think there's opportunity for us to have maybe some budget for shots down the road to see what we can do as far as, you know, adjusting compays and that, or space like that, to see if we can really break down. But right now, your, your proposed rate for the upcoming plan here is employee only rate of eighty hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty cents is well below other counties in the area. Uh, whatever your neighboring county is, has an employee rate of around twelve hundred dollars. So your market is essentially lower than that. Uh, I was just going to add that, uh, our healthy county program, uh, my counterpart on the wellness side, Tasha Redd, uh, has worked closely with Jessica and her team. And y'all are one of our more involved healthy county, uh, participants. So I think a lot of activity had been taken across Texas. And then recently, uh, and Tasha had, I think, a great things to say about all of your fault. So I do anticipate over the next year that your loss ratios aren't going to cut down. You had some things that were kind of out of control, uh, out of your control, out of the county's control. You had one claim that was over two hundred thousand dollars. You had two over a hundred thousand dollars, not including that one at the top. And then there were, uh, four claims over fifty thousand dollars. So those are the kind of things that we have insurance for, so that, you know, your employees aren't having to face the burden of paying those costs. You know, with that, there's some, some things that impact that. So it impacts the loss ratio. Uh, you know, it's just been overall, overall look at how everything comes together. But I don't see any cause for concern, any reason to change the plan at this point. Uh, so my recommendation, you keep the same of the plan that you're on. Uh, and then maybe over the next year, we can see if we find some creative ways to, do you think it's a little bit different when you're in that range? Having any questions?
No, no questions. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, allow the county judge to sign, to renew, sign and renewal contract?
A motion.
Second, Pearson.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All votes like sign. Motion passes. Item number six, discuss, consider county judge to apply for unclaimed property capital credits from electric cooperatives for use by the county for economic development. This is an annual program where the state collects, uh, unclaimed, uh, refund checks from electric cooperatives and that money is then returned to the county for a specific use and that would be economic development. Uh, and I, do I get it all right, Sandy? Okay, so is there a motion to, uh, for the county judge to apply for the unclaimed property capital credits? Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All votes like sign, motion passes. Uh, item number seven, discuss, consider mandating semi annual training for all election workers.
My name is Shannon, I work with the Van Zandt County Department of Public Safety. Work with the Elections Division. Uh, we are actually proposing not a semi annual training, but possibly training, like the Democratic Party suggested. And we talked to other workers. Training, concentrate that before an election. Um, if we do semi annual training, let's say we have a training in June, the next election's not till November, they're not going to be ready to do that. So, uh, if we go ahead and consider it and discuss it today, I would suggest closer to any election that we have the mandatory training. Um, the new election equipment was a huge investment for our county. So we want mandatory training so that the workers, if we give the workers the know-how to properly use the equipment. Um, it will also ensure that the workers have the necessary education and tools to properly complete all of the forms that we have required by the state. After every election, we have to go through and pull all of those forms and make sure that they were done properly. If they're not, sometimes the worker doesn't remember exactly what scenario happened in order to do those forms, we think it's probably. Um, it will also allow our staff to have a better understanding of the needs of our workers as well as prevent last minute changes of election workers. Uh, if it ever fails, every election we do have workers that did not come to train. We want to make sure that they have been properly trained. It's a good reflection on them, it's a good reflection with the county, and it also ensures that the election equipment was used properly. Um, it also, properly trained workers will go a long way to assure voters of the proper chain custody processes as well as the integrity and security of each of us. If, if we want to table it so we can get all partners to the table and discuss it, we don't have an objection to that. It's whatever the court decides to do anyway.
Right now, you've got voluntary training, but these, not all, the election workers choose not to go to that training and to show up at election, which is why they would have it mandated.
That is correct.
That's him and maybe we'll sit down with the bar of chairs and discuss the issue.
We have not formal. You know, it's come up in conversation, but now we don't have a formal conversation.
In light of that, I'm going to move the table to allow an opportunity for a formal conversation and try to work it out before it becomes a mandate. I agree. I think we need it, but I think a conversation would be best and we come back with it. And come back with, with an actual written plan about what's going to be required and what the consequences will be for election workers who don't, uh, uh, complete the training. Uh, we need to see all the details. So. Yes.
If the court, so only the court can mandate training for workers. The clerk's office and Elections Division can, only the court can. If they don't take the training, they would not be allowed to work.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Brother, this guy.
I, I agree, and we need to, uh, we need to see time of what the consequences are going to do besides, you won't be able to work because, uh, we've got to have an election that day. So if, if they all, if they say, okay, you can't work, we still got to have an election that day. So we'll have to figure that out. So I, I agree with these two here. And, and unless you have somebody, Judge, that wants to be at the represent the court, I'll be glad to in that meeting. Uh, or unless you have, unless you would rather do it, it doesn't matter to me.
Either one.
If you.
I'll let you be it.
You pick your, pick your place.
If you can't make it, I'll go.
Okay. I'll, I'll be glad to.
Thank you for volunteering. All right, any further discussion? All right, motion to the table, item number seven. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. All votes like sign, motion passes. Item number eight. This, you bet, thank you. Uh, discuss and consider allowing the purchase of a ticket printer for precinct one, precinct two, precinct three, for constables using a justice court technology funds pursuant to Code of Criminal Procedure Article one oh two point zero one seven three.
So move, Pearson.
Second, McCrory. Okay, and just, uh, we, uh, we approved it for, uh, Commissioner, uh, precinct three.
Constable.
Constable. Uh, last, or one of the previous ones, and we just didn't get everybody in there. So this is just following back up with it. And the money's already in, uh, there for us to pay for it, so. Uh, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Pratt. All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes, item number nine, discuss and consider uh. Approve two six month lease agreements and payment concerning belly dump trailers from Braz's trailers for precinct one.
Yes, Jill, and as the Braz's trailer lease has been, I can't remember what Mr. Pierce does, renew those over six months. I am dropping down the two trailers from three in this lease, however, this lease will terminate in December. So, it will not overlap beyond my turn. I make a motion to approve the signing of the leases.
Alright, motion made, is there a second?
Second Pearson.
Is there any uh, further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider uh, approval to name contracting officer for the Cedar Creek site. One twenty-six structural repair of the dam, the contracting officer will have the authority to sign all necessary documents. For the project. Is that you Sandy? Can you do it?
We have awareness that that morning, Ms. Janet Holmes. She is with uh, family in, in the nation. We are needing to assign a new contracting officer for the, we have actually have two ci- two city print dam site projects. That were in uh, the process and. Commissioner Melton was the actual contracting officer and uh. Jamie cannot report until we have a new uh, a new officer assigned. We did up the given that agreement on one project, the side one twenty-six. And that type cannot be awarded.
Contract.
If we can add that, what they're not being up to this negative, you know, for the projects. We're going to have those done before the end of December. Commissioner Pearson will not, it's not on for, one twenty-six will be done before the end of December, one thirty-five B. May extend only, but we can change during the part of the, during the contract process. I don't think we can add that because, um, we need to know that, if we need to do that, I would. We'll do it again on the next quarter for that, okay, that's fine, anyway.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Pearson to be, because going dams in the county or precinct two and three. So once we have dams and I think Commissioner Pearson should, should take that over and then uh. After December, we'll go from there. That's my motion.
That's a damn thing to get to.
Alright, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Alright, some damn second, is there uh, any further discussion?
Well, we'd like to say these sites are one note, shouldn't fund it for people to hear that it's unable to be sat. They are all being funded on state cases.
Soil and con- soil conservation. Right, we're just administering the grant is all we're doing, so.
And Keith does have experience to do this.
Well, the projects are in. Precinct three and precinct two, and Mr. Melton had agreed to take panel, the one in precinct three also. That's off tune, and so in this situation, I feel it only, that the proper thing to do is I'll take it and, and we'll go from there.
Okay, all those in favor say aye, uh, opposed like sign, motion passes. Uh, item number eleven, discuss, consider compensating county employees for use of personal phones during. Declared disaster county reporting. Do we want to do just no action on this since we discussed it in the workshop?
I don't, we shouldn't do it.
Alright.
I mostly have to do it.
Okay, so we're just going to do no action. Alright, item number twelve, discuss, consider adding, amending, adding, amending LGS contract to include unlimited storage space.
Good afternoon, I can't say that I'm not going to ask to cost you any money today, but it won't be very much for me. Uh, y'all know that in twenty twenty-one, uh, we switched to local government solutions for the case management software. For my office and for the courts, um, that came with. If I said the term, I wouldn't know what it meant, so I'll just be honest to say I don't remember. Uh, a certain amount of storage, um, for all of our records. We are using so much information now that we are consistently running out of storage about once a week. We have to shut our office down, not upload any new case information because there's no storage. Uh, they have recommended that we switch to their unlimited storage plan. Uh, which is a difference of a hundred sixty-seven dollars a month. So this contract that then that I presented to the judge today is the contract drafted by LGS. Uh, asking for, asking to amend our contract with them. And if you recall, they promised that there's never a rating grace during the term of their contracts for anything. Um, uh, but this is an additional service that we're, that we will be adding that to the annual schedule.
Okay, this contract is good for how long? Did you say forever? Okay. And unlimited space for a hundred and sixty-seven dollars a month? That uh, sounds like a bargain.
I'm motioning to approve and allow and authorize county judge to sign.
Say.
Alright, motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Alright, item number uh, thirteen. Discuss and consider extending the disaster declarations of May sixteenth and May uh, twenty-eighth for an additional thirty days. Uh, most of the disaster declarations are only good for seven days, and the May sixteenth one, we did extend for thirty days. So we need to extend it for another thirty days while we are continuing to do the uh, uh. Damage assessments and claims, so is there a motion?
A motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second Pearson.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider option for green debris collection and removal as a result of the recent storms. Uh, I jumped the gun on this, uh, upon further research, uh, find there is a lot of. Uh, legal requirements and federal regulations that we have to comply with before we can start debris removal. In order to qualify for uh, potential funding assistance on this. And so I would like to just table this motion until we can finish that research work and come back with the proper uh. Uh, information.
Second Pearson.
Alright, motion has been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Alright, at this point in time, comply, we are going into closed executive session in compliance with section one. Excuse me, five five one point oh seven two five, a stated Texas government code. To conduct a closed meeting to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. And a second executive session uh, for section five five one point oh seven one. Uh, Texas government code to seek advice of attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation. Or consultation with its attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege. So, it is three thirty-five. Thank you all for attending.
Judge, I had, I had Barry Black connected, but he disconnected.
How you doing David?
I'm good.
You doing alright, good to see you.
Good seeing you tonight, you guys have a good rest of your meeting.
We all.
Can y'all hear me? I'm working on it, just a sec.
Okay.
I had Barry Black, oh, he's coming back, hold on, I was trying to get Barry in real quick before I turned everything else off.
Alright.
He's still joining, I don't know if he's having trouble.
I don't. No.
Okay, let me turn everything off.